Okay, 7:00 AM, I'll follow the meeting's order. Friday, January 17th, 2025, 7:00 AM in the Hopeia Central Conference Room, we will stand to say the pledge.
Pledge begins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, so everybody who happens to be together before them, I look forward to a motion to approve the agenda of the present. May I go, whoops, do I have a second? I'm crossing seconds, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same thing? Moving on to communication and welcoming of contributors, we have two shout-outs. First one, hello, a quick note about the program yesterday, our family, especially my kids, enjoyed having it in the afternoon. It was so nice to have it within the school dynamic during such a busy time of the year. It felt like the students were more lively too. I wanted to make sure you heard a positive review to the time, especially since people normally get email about things they don't agree with. And then we had a second one saying, "Morning, Mr. Dobbs, I was very pleased with the elementary Christmas program yesterday afternoon. I was also impressed with the fifth grade band. They did very well, probably the best I've heard in a few years. The time also seemed to work out really well, the kids seemed to be lively and excited to be performing." Nice to hear positive things about that. Welcoming of visitors, we have Bobby and Gray, we got Mr. Gober, for the pitch. This is Ellen, Mrs. Steiner, and this is Peter. Nobody joining us, we assume. We'll move on to student outcome goals. Progress monitoring, third goal number one. As you can see, or in the report that you received from me, that we are on track for all three of our whole progress measures. One, 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 two, and one, three. And I, we have a couple. We have given either reports for the principal too, if they're deeper dive, but as you can see, sixty-nine percent of our students in grade K through six scored above the fiftieth percentile compared to fifty-seven percent at the same time last year. So what I did then on each of the graphs for you is I put in a trend line that I used to connect the equal testing times each year, so the winter to the winter to the winter. After visiting with Sue, she suggested that because, you know, you look to see like, oh, it's gone up, it's gone down, it's all over, and it's just stay focused on on where we're at at each testing event, and you can see that trend line for all three of them is is very good. We've been going up significantly in the last couple of years. You asked a great question, somebody asked like, why for 1.3 did they go down, and I answered those questions in the Q and A. But we're going to continue to do what we're doing, we're going to use our star test data to improve instruction and learning. They'll be testing again in late winter, and as you can see from our historical data, we talked about this last year. We tend to drop, so the principals are aware of that, teachers are aware of that, we'll focus on making sure, trying hard to make sure that that doesn't happen. And discussions have been taken place at the admin level, we've been talking about how our our reading program is working for us, our new one that we purchased, but also possibilities of a moving the science of reading resources up to the high school because of the effects that we're seeing in the elementary. And then Rox and Emma are here, and they're going to be presenting to share with you on the recent work, three through six with the grant that Great Road. So I guess if you have questions of me, or if you have questions of the principals there here, you have all of the deeper dive information, you know, from the grades, but if you have questions for us beyond the ones that we're asking in the Q and A. For that. Okay, so I think maybe, I don't know if you can just highlight for public record what you heard back from the science.
Oh, yeah, let me, yeah, that's it, yeah.
Let me pull that up. So I did, I had a question from Michael Eagle with Monica to ask, you know, about what are, what are the things that they're they're seeing in social studies and science? And if they've been seeing positive changes, because we would hope that by our reading scores going up, that we're going to see that across the board in the content area. I told Monica that was a pretty question, because I haven't directly asked those social studies teachers. So I asked principals, I said, what do you think, what are your thoughts, should I reach out to the teachers? And I said, ask the teachers directly themselves. So in the elementary, some things that I heard were seeing a huge improvement in learner agency, improved motivation to learn and to read, improvement on learning how to answer and create higher level thinking questions. And then what they're also seeing an effect on the attainment of their vocabulary. Still working with fourth and fifth graders to independently read content materials, which, you know, as they start to get older, that's just one of those things, you're no longer learning to read, you're reading to learn. And in sixth grade, the biggest impact that they were seeing was achieving high scores in both classes, and those kids are motivated to on fours. So I, not only is that the effect of reading, but just the things that we've been doing in general. High school, this isn't surprising, they said that the same kids that struggle in reading, they also struggle in the social studies and science classes. And that's not really a surprise, right? But that's something that we need to work on, and we talked about that in the admin is there's all sorts of tools now for those content areas, that if your reading level isn't at the level of the the content information, there are lots of things that we can do in order to bring that down that does not affect the content. So a child, I'm just going to use the planets, a child that is given content with the information in text that is at the, I'll just use tenth grade level on the planets, that should not keep them from learning about the planets or affect how they do on the content, because we can adjust the text, and that, we need to get better at doing that at the upper grades. One of the teachers said, I haven't seen much change in the upper grades. Another teacher in the high school said vocabulary working done in English classes is carrying across to science. And they said that kids that they're still struggling in the area of critical thinking and writing, but it's slowly improving. And one of the teachers up there was very honest and said, you know, I teach the kids that haven't really been the target audience, right? So we're looking at, you know, starting when they're younger, so he said, in all fairness, you know, I I'm not teaching that target audience, and so I can't really speak to that piece of it, so. Yeah, it was, it was interesting to get that information from those content area teachers to see the effects that they're having. But like I said, I don't think it's necessarily just reading. The reading, even the last big part of it, it's just all of the things that we've been doing for seven years. Agency, voice choice. Aye. Yeah, and Rox.
I think that's a great segue into what we're going to talk about.
Yeah, we just pulled together, like, the positives and things that we found with the new reading series. This is our first year. But talking about social studies and sciences, this program, so it's Amplify CKLA. Very heavy in social studies and science. I mean, we're on the human body right now, third grade, and I've never done the human body in third grade, so it's awesome, we're diving in and learning with, along with the kids about this. And so I think it'll be interesting to see how, as this goes, how it plays into the social studies and sciences as they get into high school.
Yeah, it'll be fun to check with Catherine and Cory, because it really pulls in a lot of science and social studies. Yeah. Some other things that we've noticed so far with having, in regard through second grade, have super kids. We've noticed there's some, there's less of kids being in the red as we get them throughout the end of the year. There's still those kids that kind of drop in the fall that we've seen from over the summer. But we've noticed that there's been less kids that are in the red than in the past years.
And that it doesn't seem as long to get them back up to they're all, to continue on with that.
Yeah, we've noticed the phonics is stronger. I mean, since, since third grade, I mean, I've been teaching for just a little while. So, I'm still young, so. We've noticed there is, there has been a difference, we've seen, like, I don't know if we can tell, like, for sure for all the whole across the board, but phonics and being, finding kids that are able to read is increasing, which we think is a plus.
Yeah.
Since the past ten years, I mean, there's kids that are struggling a lot with certain skills, but we've noticed that that is helping. We feel.
So just to kind of got to that, this is our third year of using Super Kids. So the second grade students right now were kindergartners when we started using Super Kids, which is a resource that is fully aligned to science or reading. And so next year, when you guys get those third graders, would be the first year that, you know, with the, the whole, that's the only thing those kids know, right? So we're not fully through that transition yet, but next year.
So we have noticed some positives, since they've been doing a reading series.
The great thing about this is it starts to kind of break them off, so right away in our units, we start with three classes. And so us doing the reading, and then it, we have little readers with each unit, and so then it breaks up into, you know, independent reading or partner reading, so giving that kind of gradual release to them of us facilitating to them being the.
And the readers, it's nice, because on the the Amplify and Boos part of it, they can actually listen to it and read it, which a lot of kids do still need, and some along with audiobooks and being able to see it and read it. So that's an option, as well as, you know, we can partner read, we read it to them, they can listen to it, so I think that's really good. It is challenging, like, the vocabulary is very challenging. We have, like, a vocabulary sheet that we just printed out for this unit, like cranium, axial, like, I mean, we're digging in, and I said, Mr. Shaw will be so excited to teach this lesson. You know, I mean, they're just, it's.
Lasting, it was animal classification. So sparking their schema on their background knowledge of everything, they loved it. Where this one, and a challenge that I do believe, this one, this unit, I mean, they're very interested, but it's, like she said, the vocabulary is very rich, so. And it, I mean, it's just hitting on a four. I mean, it probably takes us right now, it's probably, what, six weeks?
Yeah.
At least.
Yeah, I would say that's maybe the challenging part.
Yeah.
We're trying to get all of this information in a short amount of time, so we're trying to make sure we kind of hit all of it.
Right.
And it's new to us, so we feel like as, as we get them this year and keep going, we'll get better at it. You know, otherwise, and it compares to, like, vernaculars, backbones, or whatever, and then our backbone, so it kind of pulls it together. It shows them a lot of different skills, like text features, we're looking at where to find things. Like, where can you find a word if you don't know what it is, or why is it bolded? Why do they have lines or context? Yeah, how can we kind of help, which is going to help with some of those higher level thinking skills. A lot of it is trying to, they take notes, they put things down in their own words, and then we pull them together, like, right now, we're working on topic sentences, why are we going to write about? Yeah, the kingdom, you know, the classification of animals, so I'd say it's it's rigorous for them. The other part of it is, we can also, we can also differentiate, I feel. We can still push those kids that are getting this. One kid that was gone, I had the diagram up of all of the bodies, and he's like, well, that's the circulatory system, that's the respiratory system. You know, so he didn't miss much, he was gone, and he already knows that, so then we can kind of give them other things to do. Like, today, we're going to come up with the reader, we're going to do true and false statements, and then they're going to create them, and then we're going to give them to the other kids. You know, so like, things that they can actually do and teach each other, which is kind of cool. It really sucks them in, I don't know, with science and social studies, they really enjoy it.
Yeah. I, my first unit was literature-based, which is good, but yeah, once we get the second unit of this unit, I mean, they're, they have bought it, they love it. So that's awesome, because reading can be a challenging subject, especially if they don't like to read. And so I, yeah.
Yeah, we really hope to love this. It seems like they're interested, even the kids that are going to struggle a little bit. It seems that we can still get them interested in the topics that we're teaching them, and they're able to kind of comprehend and even remember some things. A lot of times, we try to put the things on the wall, which we're finding we don't have space. They're just. Looking at our agents and our blinds right now. But other than that, I'd say just so they can see the visual, a little bit of reviewing, so I think each, the better we get at it, the more they'll get.
One day, I walked into Emily's room, and you had the words written in, I was like, what are these words? I thought they were maybe words that they hadn't found, or they found and they wanted to know, and she's like, those are vocab. Wow, those, they were, yeah.
Yeah, they're challenge, they're challenging, and they're great, and, you know, once they see that light bulb for them, that this one is this one, and like, yeah, I can feel that, and I mean, it really pulls it together. They really. We've seen really great things with it. And I feel we can still, you know, pull in the pieces that we have done in the past that we still enjoy doing.
We can still personalize, I think, you know, which is nice, because we weren't quite sure how we could still personalize, but if we give the kids different topics or different animals, like we did with the animal classification, some kids could do PowerPoint, some kids could do a paper, some kids could do a poster, so giving them the options to choose how they can show their learning is still pretty easy in a series, which was good, is good.
And as far, I think we picked up too, was as far as a new teacher coming in, granted, this is three through six, but it's I, it's not hard to dive into. As far as understand what's going on. It's very well laid out for us.
It is, which is nice, like, when we have a sub, you know, I might highlight, or now, as we're going, we're highlighting what we should say or what we can say, so that's kind of nice with a sub, and then, I mean, if a new teacher comes in. Do you have any other questions?
I think it's going to be super interesting when the kids that have K through two plus this third grade, to see where they're at, not only like reading, but science.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, there's a diagram, and it shows kind of, so like, starting this one, it said, in kindergarten, they've talked about all this. Well, then it carries on to, not every unit does, but the human body will continue, they'll just keep building on that. So that's awesome.
And it is nice, it does tell us, like, what they should have known if they had this reading series in K through two. So then we did research, and we kind of talked about some things that we added along with, because right now, they're only doing skeletal system, muscular system. And digestive system, and we're like, so they pulled in, you have, they went over all these others, and I'm like, okay, so we're going to reveal a little bit, or, well, there's some other things, so we pretty much have them all that we're talking about, so that they can get the connection. I mean, which is a lot, but I feel that what they should have learned pulls in and gets them where they, to kind of help understand this one too, so.
That was one of the really positive things, one of the reasons, I think, that we chose the the resource was the the use of other subjects to teach the reading concepts, the the English language arts standards. So it can be kind of boring to just do literature all the time, right? And when you're pulling in those other things, like, it was, it was probably in October, I think, Mrs. Kelly, I I don't remember which grade, four, five, or six, but they were doing something on the circulatory system, and Cory, Mr. Shaw, like, two weeks later had to do, you know, he was doing something with that class, and already knew everything that he was going to teach on that day, because they had talked about it and done it in their reading class with Mrs. Kelly and Mr. Greenmeyer. So, you know, it challenged Cory to, or Mr. Shaw to go even farther and deeper into into that subject matter, so. Yeah, it's just a really positive resource for us, and our teachers are very challenged by it, our students are very challenged by it also, so. You know, we we feel really good about the choice we made so far.
Yeah, it's been a challenge, but I think it's a good challenge, for sure, you know, for us too.
As kids get older, and you talk about reading and how can, what we offer them, we really struggle to find things, because where do you target? Because when they're little, you've got phonics, when you make awareness, all those things, but in the science of reading, that vocab piece is so heavy, because if kids are lacking in vocab, they will be struggling readers, and it's just a vicious cycle, because if their reading level doesn't rise, they're not reading books that have got rich vocabulary, so then they tend to plateau, or they don't make the growth. For the kids that have, can read, and do the function of reading, they pick up that vocabulary, and they read harder books, and they pick up more vocabulary, and they just keep growing, but if they get stunted on that, we don't make progress. And so then, where do we provide interventions, where do we provide instruction? Is it on how to read, or is it that that vocabulary, so we struggle with that, so like, they said, listening to stuff, at least they're still picking up vocabulary. They might not be able to read text, they can hear it. So that goes back to what I was talking about, like, the social studies and science in the high school, that we still have to make that information accessible to the kid, and it might be reading, or it might be bringing the, you know, giving them those, the vocabulary and the content, so. Appreciate when the teachers come in. Really early, it's like, I'm with all of her kids, normally she's running me over, and I'm dragging into work. Really early. And she's got a little drive. But I appreciate hearing from them. I mean, for their, um, so unless anybody has any questions on it, so I'm looking forward to math two, because we're staying separate. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to accept the full progress monitoring for all the number one reading. May I go, whoops, do I have a second? A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing? Motion passes. Moving on to the current ground progress monitoring, student engagement. Okay, I won't spend a ton of time on it, just simply because that's the Darrell, but I did want to point out something, so if you look at the progress measure 1.3, which is the survey that we just do in house, we did get more people, more of the kids to participate, but it is, we don't go in, they just get so surveyed, right? They're just getting, now, they're going to be doing the North Dakota engagement survey. So that was one that I don't require them to do, I asked them to do it, I did have increased participation this time. But there's a couple of things, we had an admin meeting yesterday talking about possibly wording up the questions, and we were working with Lori Phillips and trying to figure out how to pull out some more of that information. We did have some open-ended questions on there, like, why, the first question was, did you, how do you feel in your classes, are you disengaged, partially engaged, or I don't remember how I got the scale? But when they answered that question, I asked them, why did you feel that way? Well, then I kind of just opened up the floodgates to complain about just everything, because the the comments were not targeted towards the things that we really wanted to know, right? Like, do your teachers give you more voice, are your teachers giving you choice, are your teachers differentiating in your class or personalizing for you? So I'm going to work on those questions, so the next time around, I can dig out some different information. But the information that we did receive from the kids, there was some good stuff in there, so we'll be sharing that with the teachers, that principals will be doing it at their own time with those teachers, and just giving it to them, saying, look at this, see what the kids had to say, you know, and ponder on it, so. Again, like I said, I kind of opened up the floodgates to people, and that, wouldn't you fill out a survey? When you're not happy, or if you're super happy, so I want to try to get that medium and figure out, like, what are, what are some things that we can do? Do you get the results back? We do, but. But you saw. And that's required. You know, and like, we've said this before, and I know I've told before this, there's a question on there, and I think has something to do with, like, if you don't have school the next day, do you feel happy? Or if it's Saturday, do you look forward to the next day? And we all say, ask the teachers that question. Or ask the teacher, you know, the same, and so there's questions on there that you I don't know, they don't really have meaning, I, we take it, you know, and we have to do it, you know, it's a requirement, but I just don't think it gives a deep enough, I don't know, what do you guys think?
No. Yeah, again, it's not deeper, it's not enough information to gauge, like, is this valid? Results I received on it, so.
Honestly, we were talking, I think the Wellington gives us more information, and we're actually going to spend the late start coming up this next week, giving the data to the teachers from the Wellington, and that's a simple quadrant, where they have to say, am I challenged in this class, or do I love it or hate it? So then they just have to put a point on there, and then I think we get better information from the Wellington. But I guess one thing to point out, that the Wellington and our in-house survey, it's making, it's puzzling us too, because we're getting conflicting data on that, because you you see that from what I gave you. So that's another thing that we're kind of going down that path of, like, maybe it's questioning, the way we're questioning, I need to figure out how to do a better job.
I think that one, like, Lori Phillips, when we were talking with her yesterday, gave a great example, you give a survey after, you know, a full day of eating, and you're looking for this rich feedback, and you get two responses, it was cold in there, and I didn't like lunch. And so, like, those are the types of things that we got from a lot of the kids that took the survey. And it was a, it was a forum for them to air their grievances, and and so while those are also valid, it's not really what we were looking for in terms of engagement. So we, yeah, we do need to look at those questions, and the timing and and things like that.
I think one common theme that of the kids that responded were that they don't like the rating, because it's harder to get an eight. The rigor's gone up, how hard it is, the accountability, and they don't like it, because they want that eight. And before it was, like we said in the last year, when we graduate sixteen kids, or whatever it was, that graduated as honor students, but we can't score above a twenty-six on an ACT, or we have trouble, you know, so there's things like that that we need to look at, but the kids don't like the grading system, because it's harder, they're held accountable, you can't just, well, how many zeros can I get? They have to do stuff, right, you know, and even for playing sports, if you're not finishing your work, you don't get to play sports, you can't just get by. You have to do what we're asking you to do, so the rigors up, the accountability's up, and that, of course, pays this, that, that, change. I would be interested to hear what the students, we think about how we always, well, we don't have the choice, you know, we don't have, we don't have an assignment, it doesn't matter, right? Questions on student. Okay, if it involves to accept the full, the guard ground progress monitoring for our ground number one, student engagement. All opposed, do I have a second? May I go second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing? Motion passes. Moving on to our board self-evaluation. Okay. I gave you a vote, I gave you the corner three, and as per our seat, look at. So I set these out. Most to be coming, I think. So what we're tasked with this quarter is seeing where we're at this current quarter, talking about where we would like to see ourselves, or where we are able to be this quarter, and maybe brainstorming some ideas as to how we are going to get there, so. Number one, the guard has adopted the student outcome goal. So in order to advance to a fifteen, again, we're at that broad community ownership of the board's vision of student outcome goals. We have one community engagement. And that is, I don't believe enough to. How many did we have there, Ron? Maybe. Our channel of teachers, that's. Correct. That was all encompassing. Ron, and I have a meeting next week with Sue to continue with our community engagement planning. So hopefully, we can continue with that, and let, let us more ideas on how to get that by, of community. Is everybody in agreement that we are currently at a twelve, and will be at a twelve? Number two, the board has adopted student pool progress measures aligned to each student outcome goal. One quarter ago, we were at a twelve. Still at a twelve.
Still at a twelve. So for next quarter, again, I think my personal opinion, if anybody has a different one, please share, um, so we'll be at a twelve. Because again, we do not have that broad community. Everybody in agreement on that?
Yes.
Uh, number three, the board has adopted guard rail. There is a typo on that one quarter ago, we were at a thirteen, but a twelve. Let's look at that change for a quarter. Change strong feelings on that? Same as a thirteen, um. And for next quarter. Yep, I believe it'll be the same again due to that. Once we can tackle that. Um, number four, the board has adopted a monitoring calendar for each student outcome goal and goal progress. We were at a two prior to that. Any feelings? That's what I have as well. Mr. Sire, you're pretty quiet.
I'm listening.
Okay.
Yeah, you're doing well.
Um, yeah, I think we actually could have been at a, at a twenty had we not, uh. Uh, what was it in the, in the twenty that was? Got it. Right, we had added, uh, superintendent's guard grounds, two of those. And I don't think that we have, uh, considered the superintendent performance of student social from sister performance, correct? We'll need a year cycle with that new evaluation to be possible. So, um, I believe we're at a sixteen this current quarter and will be at that sixteen until that. At least until the next superintendent evaluation. Number five, the board has structured operations for success. We were at a four in the last quarter. Still at a four. Yep, because we have not, uh. Yep, that will be started.
Have fun.
Hopefully that should be concluded by our June meeting. Was that the goal that we had that we will accept those in June? So probably not the next quarter that will be moving forward from that. So I would say a four at the next one. But she on that.
You drew that short straw.
I drew a four. No better way to live a policy than to go through every single one, right?
Yeah.
Thanks, is everybody in agreement that we are at a four and will continue to be on four until we get that policy review done? Uh, number six, the board promotes active teamwork and advocacy. Um, we were at a zero. I feel like we are still at a zero. Um, looking through number two. Oh, where was? Oh, the board affirms that at least every two years it has reviewed all policies governing board operating procedures. So I think until we get through two years. Exactly. Unless our coaches have anything different to say about that.
You're on objective six, right?
Correct. Um, I was, I was looking at the first one under board that affirms at least every two years it has reviewed all policies governing board operating procedures. So we have not completed two years of the legendary yet.
So didn't you just have a board operating procedures committee that revised that manual and reviewed the policies during that process?
Yes. Uh, but it hasn't been done every two years.
So, okay, that. You've done it within the last two years. I would think of it that way. You've done it within the last two years. Um, if you were four years or five years in this, yes, you would have had multiple cycles. But otherwise, if you take it to the more strict interpretation that you're choosing, and you're free to choose the more strict interpretation as a board, um, you're gonna, yeah, you're, you're gonna have to go through another cycle of reviewing them to meet it by your interpretation. My interpretation as your coach is as long as you've done it within the last two years, you've met this.
Set changing already, so.
Setting a higher standard for yourself, but give yourself some credit for the work you've done.
Um, did we all sign the ethics and conflict of interest?
One favorite was that.
Okay, so we'll wait. No pressure. Okay, so yes, all members have. Um, that we agree that as a board, that a board committee's role is to advise the board, not to advise the staff. Board officer's role is to advise the board. Oh, just the role, not the committee, um, to advise the board, not to advise the staff, and maintain a forum throughout all regularly scheduled meetings for the past three months. So according to our wise coach, um, I think we could probably check all those off. So do you guys, looking through number six, do you feel like we've attained that? Provided time during regular scheduled boarding rules to recognize the accomplishments of students and staff regarding progress. Um, we have hosted a community meeting to discuss progress during the twelve month period. You did. Um, the board agrees that every member is responsible for the outcomes of all students, not just students in the region of the student system. Maintain an average attendance of seventy percent or higher throughout regularly scheduled meetings over the previous three months, and set the expectation that information provided to one board member is provided to all. I think it's really not. Okay, to the band to eighteen. Uh, displays and keeps the status and targets of all student outcome goals and whole progress measures permanently and publicly on websites and at all buildings. So I guess we could stop there.
Excuse me, Madam Chair?
Yes.
We go back, so under partially proficient, have you all done student or staff recognitions that are specific to your, uh, progress on your student outcome goals? There's a differential there, you know.
Between those.
Two student and staff recognitions, this is very specific, that those student and staff recognitions are aligned to the student outcome goals. So, you know, the kid who won the spelling bee, absolutely great, recognize that kiddo. But specific to the student outcome goals might be, you know, that kid who won the spelling bee, you know, that, you know, that kid started out behind grade level as measured by our goal progress measure. But because of these strategies, not only is that kid grown and is now meeting standard as measured by our student outcome goals, that kid also, you know, look at this additional com- accomplishment that was accessible to them, uh, through that of winning the spelling bee. You see how the difference, how the difference works? Or the kid who started, you know, high school really disengaged. Um, and, you know, you were, teachers were struggling to get that kiddo across the finish line of just graduating, but now they're also graduating choice ready, you know, lifting that kid up. And it doesn't have to be a kid who started behind and has grown, but how your focus on your goals has really helped. Um, and make, make, kind of showing on a more personal level and recognizing students for those accomplishments aligned to your goals. Do you, does?
Yeah, and that doesn't necessarily have to be a student either, correct? That could be any staff that's been.
Absolutely, it can be a staff number two.
Okay, so, um, Sue knocked us back down to two.
Johnny and Reagan, I, we can learn, figure something out.
Okay, so by the next quarter, we figure we could probably be at a six.
Yeah.
She lets us fly and she knocks us down.
Sorry.
We can't be high flyers all the time.
I'm also going to encourage y'all on this, it's very easy in these instruments to go linear left to right. Um, and one of the things that I like about how this particular manual is designed is it has those little boxes next to each of the criteria and not just a dot, um, or even nothing at all. And what I would encourage you to do, and you don't have to do it today, but maybe between now and your next board self-evaluation, is just going through that and checking all the things that you believe you have, even if they're under advanced and you're still, it, it, novice or partially proficient. Like, look at what you have accomplished, look at what you're already doing, because then your focus becomes on filling in the gaps. And you might, if you look through, you know, if you, if you believe you're at novice today and, you know, to get to partially proficient, you know, the, these recognitions, but look under proficient and advanced as well and see, are there things under here we're already doing? Are there other things that maybe we're close to doing that we want to accomplish in the next quarter? Are there things, you know, sort of like the policy diet in an earlier objective that, or community engagement might take more time? Let's start it now, even if it might take one, two, or even three quarters to accomplish. And the broad community ownership, that's something that takes most districts a couple of years. Um, and so you'll, you'll see this, you know, steady progress on objectives one and two. And then you're just going to see, not a pause, because you, you should continue to be working on that community engagement to build that broad community ownership. Um, doesn't mean wait to do it, which you guys aren't. Um, you're, you're, you're consistently working on that. Um, but just recognizing some of these things might take a little more time, even if you're still actively working on them in the interim.
For comments? Um, if my math is correct, that puts us at a fifty-nine for. Third quarter at fifty-nine, next quarter, um, we're looking towards being at a big five. Their goal to be at a hundred percent. Um, do I have a motion to approve? A current quarter and the next quarter, as we came up with at the board? Go me. They most do I have a second? I have some seconds. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same thing. Motion. I'm a second, I'm together, do I have a motion to approve it? So. I go home, strike a second. Fire. How sorry, who's seconded? Um, sorry.
You and then Ago?
Yes.
Ron the day?
Yes.
Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Kenny Carlson?
Yes.
Monica Heimbo?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero. Uh, moving on to item four, if you guys on that report. You know, what? Um, item five, I've been, items for discussion and possible action. You know, A, approve the twenty twenty-five OPS school board election details. Um, Shannon, you just want to highlight those.
We have to have a, have these proved so many days in advance um, before the election day and the end of the month, around February first is the date. Um, I have proposed, um, there is one, uh, position open. Uh, it is the city position currently occupied by Ron the day. Um, and I have suggested to have the election held on June tenth. The canvassing day would be thirteen days later on June twenty-third. Um, to have it here at the district central office with polls opened at eleven AM and polls at seven PM.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve, um, the election details as per se? Who, they most do I have a second? Carlson, seconds, I'm doing a roll call on that.
Um, yes, please.
Shannon, could you please follow me?
Um, Brian Sayer?
Yes.
Sheila Nagel?
Yes.
Kenny Carlson?
Yes.
Ron the day?
Yes.
Monica Heimbo?
Yes, motion passes. I probably did that wrong, didn't I? So in our coaching with Sue, um, we were instructed that when we have the discussion of possible action, that we need the motion on the board before we open the discussion. That is the proper way to do it, to the record rule. So this is something we haven't been doing in the task. Um, because you make the motion does not mean that you automatically have to vote for it or that you're necessarily in agreement. That motion is meaning that you're, um, that you're opening the discussion on that. So.
And we need a second.
And you need a second to open the discussion. And that was my fault for not doing that. Sorry, Sue. Okay, also I'd be. Uh, Cummings Field update. So we would need a motion to start the discussion on this in a second.
Need motion.
Sire makes a motion to open discussion. Um, Cummings Field update, do I have a second? Cross and second. Do, do we need a roll call for this? Let's do that.
Kenny Carlson?
Oh, yeah.
No, no, it's just to open.
Just vote.
Yeah, we're not voting. Okay, so we have a motion and second to open the discussion. Cummings Field, uh, board member Sire was the one that pulled this, so we'll get to that, so I will let you leave the discussion.
Hey, with Cummings Field, I wrote a little letter just of information in my thoughts. Um, you know, just thinking about the football field, the baseball field and all that business down there. Again, the letter that I wrote. You know, it's a hard decision if we keep, understand that we should keep the park board on track with their contracts. But if they don't have any money to do any of the upkeep, where, where do we sit? We still are going to have to pay for maintenance, do all the work down there. The only one that they'll probably take care of would be the lawn going, the lawn care. So if they have no money, we still got to pay for it anyways, so I guess my feelings would be if the school would take over the property and the money that we put forth into it is, we're going to get back out of it at the end because we'll have ownership of the property. Well, all I really have to say, yes, I'm, I'm in agreeance of moving forward with it, but that doesn't mean we have to vote on it today, we table it again.
Okay, um, just for reference, there was a, in our superintendent's report that got pulled from there, the Cummins Field update. Mrs. Selby, our head of everything, has, she was strongly encouraged to make a decision on this as a recommendation to the board. Um, and her recommendation is not to purchase it at this time. From my understanding, that wasn't a, let's close the door on this and be done. Let's choose not to purchase it at this time, but work with the park board move forward on how um, how we can make this work. Um, it was pretty detailed as to why this will come out, work to buy it at this time. You guys have any other comments?
Has there been any conversation between you and the park board since the last meeting?
No, just waiting for direction from you, because they, you know, just bring what I felt, what we needed to do, my recommendation and see, because you guys are the ones that decided for a purchase. And I just give you the information, if you have a directive to me, then I can, you know, well, but really to say anything to them about, yes, we're thinking or we're, no, we're not thinking, you know, not even.
I really struggle with the fact of taking up another piece of property that is going to cause a lot more maintenance for our facility and our staff. Um, when we have critical needs within this building that I think need to be addressed. Taking up more property, that's going to be one of the points.
So what is, can we hold the park board again, we'll pay attention. What was the contract that they have to pay for maintenance?
Well, if you look at what the lawyer has said, our lawyer has said, she believes that that, um, MOU is a binding. You know, so all of her guidance has been, you know, I, I've included both her guidance from before and after our last meeting, that there's a binding contract. She disagreed with the statement that, you know, it's not something that. I, but I don't know, is it worth the legal fees to go after them for past?
No, I don't think about past, I'm talking about future.
Oh, that's interesting, yeah.
Like hold them accountable to help pay for what they're supposed to on that contract.
I guess that would be my concern is, they don't do anything to raise any money. For in town, and if they don't have any money.
Correct, but that's not the school's problem.
I know.
Not to be insensitive about that, but I mean, when the school has a problem, we have to solve it.
Right, I understand that, but.
I'm just, you know, what are, against people? Like, what their input is, is, you know, they're directly gonna be impacted by. I mean, you guys are the ones that are gonna, you know, it's gonna impact you guys directly. So is it something that you think is feasible down the road? You know, if we can find a way to, whatever, get some grants, you know, do some, I don't know if we could even do fundraising, but or is it something they hope, hopes to?
If we acquired it, the work would be done.
He's very good about that, he doesn't say, nope, I'm not gonna do it.
And, and I, I'm really neither here nor there on this field. It seems like it would be, it would, in my common sense, I, it seems like it would make sense to acquire, I guess, as long as you're doing much of the upkeep on it, and we don't do all of it, I mean, there's things that the city, they got a broken door handle down there, they replace and things like that, so we're not doing all of it, they do the mowing. There are times where things are broken, we just fix it pay for it, and spend that way forever, I guess, I kind of learned that part that when it gets to that point, we need to just do it. And, so I, yes, there will be, you know, Bobby and I have talked and he does most of the mowing on our facilities and all the tracks and school. That would get added, and it would take probably another day of mowing, so you probably have at least two days of just mowing. You know, and you get a high school kid to do some of that, I guess, I could hire somebody for that. Sometimes that gets to be a high hassle too, where it's almost, you have to babysit somebody to do that kind of stuff, and I think we've talked that we would rather just take care of it if we can or not have the extra expense of another employee and and then just have to keep an eye on it, so that's my viewpoint on that. I don't, the light situation could get very expensive, I guess, I I don't know the answer to that, or it could last a long time, I haven't done an open search on that.
I'm tired of playing these games.
That's kind of my thought, though.
I guess I feel the same as you, if this was a situation where we weren't worried about our foreigners were gonna go out and we could actually have school, like I don't think there would be an issue to purchase that, but we don't have money to teach all these people.
The purchasing isn't the expense.
That's not the expense. I don't, I would think it would be something where if we, if we decide not to do it now, it's, it seemed like they have buyers at the door waiting to take over, so I would think it's something you could revisit in, you know, what, even six months, you know, and he decided, got more information and decided it was something that we could do. And I would think the park board was still the old, too, but at that time, but I guess I'm a little stupid. And I don't think that choosing not to buy it is a closed door either, it's, it's worked together.
Whether you buy it or not, we're still going to make sure that that field is usable for football and for baseball and the things that we need, you know, we'll be in cooperation with them. I did get some feedback from Vic on the, um, concession stand. She said, are you nuts? She said, when it rains, it pours in that field, I mean, she just talked about the, how it's, you know, there's, it's a, yeah, with the building that, that, you know, she just, there's constantly something that needs to be fixed on there, which we would be taking under us, but I think whatever your direction is to me, whether you want to move forward with purchasing or working something out, I'll, I'll, I'll do that. Even though my, this is what, my recommendation is just based on what we're dealing with here and what is expected. Um, but I think, you know, to meet with the park board, and we can talk about, you know, this is what we expect, or here's what we, we want, and here's what the board is wanting, you know, moving forward, but we're gonna take care of those little things like Bobby and Dave said, if something's broken and they're not taking care of it, we'll take care of it. But we're in a partnership moving forward, you know, the, your big expenses. It's not just the school that's sitting responsible. And these two guys will do whatever we tell them to do. And they, they, they just make things work.
We know, that's why we don't want to put more.
Right, that they just make things work, I mean, Bobby would come at six in the morning to mow, and, you know, I mean, they'll do what needs to be done in order to make our school, so.
Well, I don't think we wanna close the door on it, but I don't think we wanna make decisions for a lot.
Um, so my understanding is that we do not need um, a motion unless we are choosing to purchase. As we do not need to act on it, if we are not purchasing it, correct?
You're, Monica, you're only, so it's posed for discussion and possible action, it's only if there is an action that you can, that's legally allowable with the posting of that agenda item.
Okay, so this is just an update, if we chose, chose to have that for a vote, that would have to appear on a future agenda, is that what you're telling me?
That's my understanding of Robert Tools.
Okay.
So I think you guys could give me a directive, but say, go to the park board, let's work this out, we're not, you know, we're not even thinking and moving forward, but if you're thinking of moving forward and, um, purchasing it, let me know, and we'll bring it back next month, you know, for people to purchase it. But I believe as a board you can say to me, we're not, we've decided we're not going to, and, you know.
So we make motion to table it and tell whenever better discussion with the park board?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion about the table, if it's just automatically tabled until we put it on there to approve the opportunity. I mean, we can do work for the updates down the line without, yeah, active on it, but.
No, we can put the update on next month again, and I can go visit with Jason and see where the board's sitting at right now, and that's what you would like to do.
Any other discussion on this? Is there a construction class at the hall? There's not, there's nobody, because I thought, you know, something like, they could take on building with that.
You know, I don't, if you move forward, I mean, there's always a possibility to talk to the center of people and just say, hey, you know, because I know Spelling and Rattle would, you know, somehow.
It might be. Well, that would be something that we move over to.
Right, that's what last year I was.
But I've said, that takes all year. If it was something that, you know, they could look at in the fall, even if it's the next year. And the park board could certainly
Yeah, I guess I'm very impressed with what we have. Any other thoughts?
There's, there's grants out there, I googled on the phone, literally ten, probably five of them within five minutes. I mean, the NFL has one, and it talks about facilities and structural and that type of thing, there's stuff, if they just look for, you know, whether we do it as a combined joint effort, but I think there are some possibilities out there. It says, it was like football facilities, and there's some, if it's baseball, and it talks about, some of them talk about lighting, some of them, they talk about, some talk about equipment, there's different. There are some things out there at least.
So what do we do with that motion to the staff on the table?
I have no act, unless you have an action that you are intended to do, I just would put no action to date.
No action to take, okay.
I'll see how, and I'll do something.
And so looking ahead to our future meetings, um, possible date change on our Friday, February twenty-first one, um, the date that was thrown out was the fourteenth, I think the, oh. So that will be held out at, uh, Sar CTC building. And Mr. Rockman and Mr. Spellerberg, I believe, will be there to get their presentation.
Yes, they are, yeah.
And they serve breakfast. A regular meeting Friday, March twenty-first. We are legally obligated to do our superintendent evaluation by the fourteenth or the fifteenth, fifteenth, by the fifteenth, which I believe is Saturday, correct? Yes, so, um, we either need to decide to do a special meeting or move our regular March meeting from the twenty-first up to the fourteenth. Either we twice or we're meeting. Well, meeting, the other meeting. Okay, so we will move our March meeting to the fourteen. Uh, is there any other business for the bit of the order?
Uh, were you going to create a facilities committee?
A facilities committee, um, so I don't know if I talked to Sue at length on that. Um, I kind of got an idea from Mr. Johnson up in Valley City. What he did is he, um, he created, what do you call it, a facilities, a school facilities committee. It consisted of two board members, administration, maintenance, and then I think they had probably up to eighteen, seventeen, eighteen more community members on there, summer parents, summer staff. Um, Anna had some discussion with him, he said it's been really beneficial moving forward. My opinion on it is, um, we're gonna get that buy-in from the community, if this was a referendum again, the more people that we can have involved in the community, the better. And this doesn't have to be ceremony people that are down home for it. We need some of those people that we know were against it before, because if we don't get them involved in that process, we're not gonna we're gonna be facing another referendum. So that's my plan moving forward, um, and I am working on that, so hopefully by our March meeting. And I know it's meeting with Lori, so I'll, I'll tell her and we'll touch base on that. Is that? Okay, everybody, perfect. Okay, any other? Nope. Okay, I will adjourn the meeting at, uh, eight oh four.